All the meetings are ordered, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. You'll notice we did not have a Sioux Falls School District work session today. That has been pushed to the end of the month until after the legislative session because we'll be discussing budget and we'll know the final numbers by then so that we can have a better work session. Moving on, nobody signed up to address the board, Vicki? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of February 3rd, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda is approved. No new conflicts of interest were presented? Onto approval of the consent agenda. Items 7A through D. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Now to the report of the president. Marketing and admissions report.
President Mickelson and members of the school board. My name is Megan Fisher. I'm the vice president for enrollment management at Southeast Tech and it's a pleasure to be here today with my colleague Jennifer Lambly. Jennifer is our marketing and communications coordinator at Southeast Tech. And today we are going to be presenting on admissions and marketing and recruitment efforts specifically the last year. I think it was about a year ago, right? We all headed home and took our kids with us and everything else and started working from home and how we were going to be changing our strategies to communicate with our prospective students and continue to recruit them to Southeast Tech. So that's really our focus today of our presentation. And I just wanted to recognize before we get started, of course Jennifer and all of her hard work and you're going to really get a good sense of that when she presents to you today. But also Mandy Frye, our director of admissions, she would be presenting, but unfortunately she couldn't be with us today. So those two work hand in hand when it comes to recruiting, communicating, marketing to our students, so. So just like I said, a change in strategy, right? It's the world we're living in right now. And the big thing for us was definitely more virtual options. We love to get students to campus and we always talk about that because that's where they can interact with faculty. They can tour our hands-on learning labs, all those good things. That's really what cements a student's decision about where they want to pursue their college education. So some of the things that we've developed, which, you know, we didn't have before, were Zoom office hours that students can pop in and visit with us, virtual visits and online fairs. Everything went online, including, you know, Minnesota, Iowa, Nebraska, South Dakota, North Dakota, all of those other states that we recruit in as well. And they each wanted to do them a little bit differently, so that meant a lot of changes for us as well. But it went fairly well. Of course, we would rather see those people in person and we hope we can do that this next fall. Get our counselors out there traveling again. And then, of course, the college fairs and the high school, the career fairs. Usually we have a ton of career fairs during the spring and, of course, we're not doing that in person either. So what that has meant is really developing new content, right? Curating that content. Content is king when it comes to communicating with prospective students, but also when it comes to our website. Our website is our number one marketing tool, as you know, and we presented on our new website and it's performing fabulously and Jen will talk about that a little bit. But it meant developing about 40 new videos and so it's been a big undertaking. And then just increased direct mail communication. So our admissions funnel, which we've talked to you a lot about over the last few years and what that looks like, right? A big part of that is the communication with those students.
Hi, I'm Jen Lambly. Like Megan said, I'm marketing and communications coordinator over at Southeast Tech. And yeah, we did a lot of changes and one of those big changes was video, video, video. So really we developed three different series of videos. One was a campus tour series, six in total. And one provided an overview of campus and we'll watch that one in a minute here. And then the others were based on academic buildings. So as you may know, many of our programs are, you know, if you're in nursing, you spend a lot of your time in the health building. So that's how we organize those tour videos. And then we worked on a number of program videos just to highlight faculty, highlight our labs for specific programs or a specific group of programs. And then last we did another series for admissions process. And that was more, you know, what our financial aid director will have to say about how you apply to Southeast Tech and secure your financial aid. So we did one of those for admissions, one for financial aid, a student success one, a housing one, et cetera. And those just really kind of highlight, you know, the steps that people would need to take to become a student at Southeast Tech. So yeah, so we've been using those videos in marketing admissions, but we were also using them. We're multi-purposeing them in as many ways as we possibly can. For example, just this week Cory Borch, and he's our sports turf management instructor, and he was speaking at a conference and he was able to use the horticulture sports turf management video there to highlight the work that they're doing too. So I'm just going to click here and I'll have it myself inside. I will show you an example of these videos. Another thing we did on our website was create this video library page as a way to house all these things on our website. And they're all pulled off of YouTube, which of course is, you know, one of the top search engines out there too. So we're gaining the benefit of having them on our site plus also the metrics that are involved in YouTube. So I will click here and this is just the campus overview video. It's the shortest of them and just gives a really good.
Southeast Technical College is conveniently located just off Interstate 29 in Sioux Falls on the northwest side of the city, near all kinds of amenities, including dining, shopping, the Sanford Sports Complex, and plenty of outdoor recreation. Take exit 81 and follow Maple Street to Career Avenue. The first building that you see as you enter campus is the George S. Mickelson Center, facing north with big windows on every side and bright sunny spaces for studying and relaxing. Friendly admissions and financial aid teams, the Student Success Center, the Registrar's Office, and our campus bookstore are located inside the Mickelson Center. Beyond the Mickelson Center to the south, you will see gorgeous green spaces and modern buildings with a spectacular view of the prairie and the city. Continue south on Career Avenue and the modern Sullivan Science Center on your left offers sweeping views and state-of-the-art technology utilized by professionals working in the healthcare and law enforcement industries. This award-winning building is known for its pyramid-shaped skylights and the high-tech labs and classrooms designed around real-world facilities. Just ahead and to the east of the Sullivan Science Center is the Southeast Technology Center. The state-of-the-art facility is home to all aspects of computer technology, from programming to troubleshooting to security, website development, and more. Laboratories and classrooms are fully innovated with the most advanced equipment and technology, ready to prepare students for high-demand fields. Just down the road a bit to your west, overlooking Sioux Falls, is the Ed Wood Trade and Industry Center. Students in our industrial technology, transportation, horticulture, and construction management programs will spend most of their time inside this prairie-style building. Outdoor greenhouses, raised vegetation beds, and natural design elements surround this unique facility. And students from the sports turf management program have a hands-on opportunity to work with golf greens and pitching mounds. The south end of campus is where you'll be greeted by our newest facility, the Hub. The Hub is a center for activity where students and faculty gather to dine at Pavos Pizza and Grill. Here, you'll find student lounges, traditional classrooms, the Southeast Tech Business Office, a 500-seat theater classroom, and impressive garage spaces for our automotive and diesel technology programs. In addition to our five main buildings, you will find apartment-style student housing options on the west side of campus and the Scarborough Childcare Center for quality onsite childcare options for students and staff of Southeast Tech. To learn more about Southeast Technical College in Sioux Falls, contact our admissions office.
Okay, so that's an example of one of the tour videos. And then before I click back to the presentation, I'm just going to go to the other tab that we had pulled out here. In the interest of taking a tour, another one of the things that we did was we launched this interactive 3D map. So it has a, an interactive drawing of a campus. And then here in the legend, you can click on categories of programs or specific buildings. And then in here you can see where there's different videos and program photos, tour videos. Another thing that we've done for some of our lab spaces are expanding our 360 videos where you can go in and click and actually look around a lab space. And then there's program descriptions and links to the buildings in there as well. And so I'm just going to show you an example here of one of our other videos. So, you know, if you were interested in automotive technology, you know, here's the video that you could watch for that. This one is a little bit longer, so we'll just watch the first portion of it. But then you'll get a feel for how the program videos are designed.
Welcome to Southeast Technical College. Southeast Technical College's transportation technology programs are your key to a hands-on career, building, repairing, and refinishing engines and auto bodies. Automotive technology, diesel technology, and collision repair and refinish technology make up the core of Southeast Tech's transportation technology programs. All are Build Dakota programs and boast a 100% job placement rate. In the automotive technology program, students earn an associate of applied science degree which covers all eight areas of automotive service excellence, or ASC.
We do brakes, automatic transmissions, manual transmissions, engine repair, and steering suspension. Your second year, then you'll come back and do electronics for one full semester. Then you'll do a half a semester of engine performance and one section of heating and air conditioning. We are the lowest in the region for student instructor ratio in the automotive department. We have 30-plus vehicles in our fleet, two-thirds of which are 2010 or newer. We also have 15 diagnostic simulation devices for one-on-one instruction. We also offer dealer-level style scan tools.
So that will just give you a sampling of what the program videos are like. To date, we have 13 of them complete and the second batch is with our editor now. So we're going to keep pushing these out on our website and our social media channels and things like that as they are completed. Stitching back over to the presentation here. And then it's also worth mentioning too, like the interactive campus map is, you know, just one of the places where you can access material. We still have program photos and videos and the 360 videos on program pages. We link out to them on social media. If we have a news story, for example, that mentions a program, we'll link back to that program page and things like that. So we're trying to get as much use out of them as we possibly can. And then we did a few other upgrades to our website. We'll just discuss them briefly here. One of the things we did is we're using API technology to pull our catalog from our catalog to our website. So what it basically is, is just technology that lets our two different platforms talk to one another. So when you go to, say, automotive technology page and you want to see what classes are there, the information that you're viewing on the website is now pulling directly from the catalog, which is going to be great for us to have because everything is going to be more accurate. We're not going to have to make multiple updates. And so that information will be there without actually having to physically go into the catalog. And then another thing that we were working on is search engine optimization. Back when we launched our site in December of 2019, we had to kind of prioritize what sites we were going to do the keyword research on and write meta tags and create all that backend information. So at that time, we had made the decision to do our program pages and then a handful of key landing pages. But since then, we are just about fully optimized. We've worked on building all that other information and putting it into the backend of the website to make us more searchable. I would just say roughly our site's probably 90% fully optimized. There's some things that we didn't go back and do like old news stories and things like that, so I wouldn't say that were completely. But all the major sections have the keywords, the title tags, the meta descriptions and all. Those other little pieces of information that make it easier to find online. And then lastly, we did a website chat feature. That was launched in October of this last year and it's just getting more and more used. So prospective students can speak with admissions office in real time. Right now they're averaging about six chats a day or about 100 a month. So it's been another good tool that the prospective students have been able to use to get information. All right. And then we'll talk a little bit about our 2021 advertising and recruiting campaign. I just bolted out all of the different tactics that we're using in that campaign here and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just wanted to point out a couple here. One of the things that we're doing is some dynamic mobile display advertising. And so this is just a really good way to push out our different programs. So people get a targeted ad. So somebody whose search history indicates that they're interested in cars might be served back an automotive technology or a diesel ad. Somebody who is interested in gardening may get a horticulture technology ad and serve back to them. Direct mail application is something new that we started this year. And so what that does is it basically just reinforces our direct mailings. So when a household gets a direct mail piece from us, that household is hit with digital ads as well as a follow-up. So they're seeing the same messages in multiple places. And then we're also doing a couple different geofencing things. Competitive mobile geofencing, which is drawing a virtual fence around our competitors. And then also with college fairs. The college fairs, we'd have to modify a little bit this year because rather than circling, say, a half-mile radius around the hub on Tuesday afternoon at 4:00, we've been doing maybe the whole state for the length of time that that job fair page is open. So a technique that we're still using, but just had to modify a little bit this year. And then Megan's going to talk a little bit about the predictive analysis that we're using for some of these direct mail pieces.
Great. Thanks, Jen. She's been rather busy the last year. President Greg suggested that we show you all the videos because he thought we might have time, but. We told him two was sufficient, so. But they really are excellent and provides really good content to keep people on our website, so we love that. Predictive analysis modeling. So what you're looking at here, a couple of years ago, ACT and NRCC UA combined. And the tool that they give us to use is what you see an image of there. It's called the Ocurra Lab. And we purchase names, keep in mind, these are high school names, right? We're purchasing approximately 30,000 names annually. So that's quite a few names. That's where we're, that's why that communication funnel that Jen talked about is so important. Because when we're, whether, when we talk about direct communication, yes, they are getting some letters and they're getting postcards and they're getting mass emails and things like that that help us target those individuals. And so with the Ocurra Lab, that enables us to assess our enrollment with the current high school senior class and how they convert. So you can see in this picture, we're looking at 2019, 2020, and 2021. So on a quarterly basis, we're reporting back the information on the names that we purchased so that we can. And I have to be honest, it's taken a couple of years to get to this point, right? You got to build out your data and some of the past data wasn't necessarily clean. And but I'm feeling like we're getting to the point where it's looking pretty good in terms of the data that we're receiving and that we're giving back to them. So quarterly, we're able to take a look at how we're tracking year over year in our senior class. That's the picture you're looking at. But we also purchased juniors' names and we purchased some sophomore names. So we have quite a few there. And just how that informs our direct marketing plan. This image here is just another snippet to show the first source. We really want to track that first source and how a student enters Southeast Tech. Now, obviously, a lot of names we do purchase, but some of those individuals may have inquired with us before. And when we look at whether it's developing a new program or we want to expand our reach, right? Our market, try to get more students, that's what's really helpful. Then we can see who's converting in a specific area. And sometimes it is specific to a program. Maybe we're the only college that offers that program in the tri-state region. So we might be able to expand our purchase of names for our program a little bit greater. But I would say our purchase names are big, but also our website. That's how people are coming into us. They're clicking to call us. They're clicking to submit an inquiry, an online inquiry form. Now they can chat. They can stop in at our virtual hours. They've got all sorts of options on the website. So this just provides that dashboard for us to look at and it's been really helpful. And now with our, so many digital marketing strategies, what it allows us to do is really, right? Change up our tactics quickly if we see that one thing's working well and one, and something isn't. And we knew before we started doing videos that the few videos we had out there performed really well in paid search, everything. So really excited about the work Jen has done with the videos.
And then the last thing we were just going to mention today was the admissions direct marketing campaigns. So this is where marketing admissions really work hand in hand. So after they have those names from the Incora Data Lab, admissions and marketing works together to, you know, create a piece, whether it's a postcard, a letter, a mass email. Work together on the coordination and the printing and the design and all those things that need to be done to get those to the student in hand. And so what this does is approximately twice a month, a student in the funnel will get hit with some sort of messaging, whether it's a, you know, that postcard or email or letter. And then that is in addition to all the transactional messages that the admissions representatives are having with them. You know, like here's the deadline for dual credit or there's another communication for scholarships or jumpstart or registration dates. Let's see. So like Megan said, it's taken a couple of years to get to this point, but this year we also increased some of those mailings as well. Yep. And that really is what we've been doing last year. That's it.
Do you have any questions for us? That's a lot of information to throw at you, but we wanted to show you that we have tried to change at times and what's necessary. So we would welcome any questions you have.
You bet. So those names, I'm curious, the names you purchased with the ACT, NCRC, like is that data, like, since our students now take the NCRC, is all of them, I believe, is juniors in our district and so forth? Is that information, you can only get it from them, like we can't provide that to you as well from the district?
So the way it works is, you know, I'll be honest, we purchase all of South Dakota. That's, we've got 30,000 of names. We're purchasing them all. And if a student, right, marks on their ACT or if they indicate a program that they're interested in, and then we look at geographically. Our sweet spot is still Sioux Falls metropolitan and probably 75 to 90-mile radius around the city. And so we purchase all the names we can of those and start, especially if the student were to indicate in some way. Or they might come into us from a college fair or a career fair or maybe one of our faculty members presented to a class and they collected some information or the students said they were interested and self-provided their information, right? We're going to include them in our marketing strategies. But then we are also looking at, right, Iowa, we have certain, we do have certain communities that we know we have a strong program. We just have a history there, especially in certain programs. So it's nice to know that, that we can really target that. And we track that too as our reps are going out to those. Of course, not this year they didn't, but as they go out to those communities, we know which ones have, maybe they have a strong, you know, FFA program or they have a teacher who, you know, they teach automotive at the school. So there's those types of things that we track to and make sure we purchase names and communicate with them.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the videos are very impressive. They're super professional, great information. And I think, I like, I know you said this one's kind of long, but even five minutes is just a nice snapshot of a program. And so it kind of, it reminds me of the benefit of Southeast Tech. And that is that you can come and just get what you need and not have to have kind of all these other things that go along with it. And so that's great. As a mom of a junior, I've been spending a lot of time looking at different college, you know, websites. And I appreciate those that are very easy to navigate and well laid out because you are, you're kind of in and out and you're looking for specific things. And so if you can go and spend five minutes watching a video, that's amazing. It's a great use of somebody's time, gives you great visuals and also great information. And having, you know, students, you can tell they're recent because some of the students have masks on. And so I think it's just really good information and very well laid out. And so hopefully that continues to pay off as your challenge and some of the other ways of recruiting students. But having these videos that you can use for several years will be a huge plus.
And one thing we track with our website is time on site, right? So that we want people, if you're interested in a program and if you're interested in surgical technology, we want them to be, to have good content that they can really explore and see the labs. And, you know, most people aren't going to get to that level right away, but if you come back, you know, we want them to keep finding more information. And so that's where the videos are really helpful. And then the other batch of videos that they did with the admissions process, financial aid process, right? Students want to know, they want to know, what am I going to major in and how am I going to pay for this? So those have been great and we get a lot of hits on those as well.
And I think it's been great how well you pivoted, I mean, really between, with everything that has happened this whole year to be able to pivot and so quickly and get everything, you know, out there so that students do have that ability to find any information they might be looking for at Southeast Tech. So I'm just.
And we're hopeful that it'll be, I think it's going to be critically important post-pandemic because I don't think we're just going to go back to the norms of what we used to know. People are going to want to have options, you know, still do some things virtually in terms of efficiency and their time and that sort of thing. So we're not going to stop doing these things. We'll continue to update them.
You've worked so closely with the industry around here and really adapted the program and veneer what the industry needs are and getting a workforce out there in a place that can get a job and really, you know, give back their skills to that particular industry. So really listened and really insightful in that area. So really listened and really insightful on that, as you.
Yeah, Jen did a great job working on the scripts with the faculty. And one of our videos is with Career Services and we have three or four industry partners who actually, you know, filmed and talked. And we show that at our campus visit dates. We have one more campus visit date. And I really love it almost more than having one person there to talk because then we get to hit a few of them and hear from a variety of industry partners. So that's been awesome to have those videos for that purpose too.
Thank you. And do I have a motion then to acknowledge the marketing and admissions reports?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Anything before we go into executive session, Bob?
No, President Mickelson, I just want to echo again the comments of Megan and her team. They've done an outstanding job. Jennifer and Mandy Frye couldn't be here, Director of Admissions. I know we've been here in front of you all talking quite a bit about faculty and how their world has been turned upside down. And obviously the same can be said for admissions and financial aid and our student success advisors and all of those that work hand in hand with students. And so much has changed, but we, as a campus, I think responded very well and really proud of the work that's going on. And we're starting to track now, of course, as we get ready and move into a Fall '21 or our numbers. So as we go forward, we'll provide some updates for you. The next couple of weeks will be very important weeks for us and I think our April update will have a little more discussion about graduation. And then also the legislative session will be over. So be able to, at that time, be able to provide you with more information on how things have turned out in here for. So with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Greggs. Do I have a motion to move into executive session per SDCL 125-2, our print three?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are moving into executive session.